Recording?
Yep.
Set for it. Okay, welcome everybody to the board meeting here. I'll call a meeting to order. Bid results.
Can I read them?
Yeah, go ahead.
There was only one bid received for this contract, the hydraulic rescue tool. And it was opened by myself and the treasurer and deputy clerk and fire chief present. It was from Garrison Fire and Rescue out of Palanville, New York. And it was for the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. There were no deviations in deliveries within sixty days. And this bid will be reviewed by the fire chief, which it was. And I can read that also if you'd like. We received a letter today from the fire chief.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The officers of the Rosas Point Fire Department have reviewed the proposals submitted by Garrison Fire and Rescue Corporation for the hydraulic rescue tools in the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. We find the proposal to be in compliance with the specifications and contract documents for Contract 2012-02, Hydraulic Rescue Tools, dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. We recommend that the mayor and the board accept this proposal. This was from the fire chief and the first assistant fire chief.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the hydraulic rescue tools from Garrison Fire Rescue.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
That's, that's the way. Grant was paid and the boys are paid the remainder out of their account on the fire department. Thirty-five hundred dollars. Thirty-five hundred. I believe that's what it was, wasn't it Carol?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm sure it's thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
So, that's what we're gonna figure.
Okay.
All right, ready? Everyone, uh, okay. Well, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second one will be... Okay, the surplus bid results for nineteen ninety-two case.
There was two bids that were received for the surplus case six-twenty-one loader and opened by myself with the treasurer and deputy clerk present. Present, excuse me. Dragoons Barney Quinton out of Moore's bid twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And Darren P. Dickerson from Willsbury, New York was twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the high bid from Dragoons for twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
One second. Any discussion? Any no discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay. Comments, comments from the public?
Thanks, sir. Thanks for your time.
Oh.
That was the second bid, I'm sorry. It's the director meeting. How good evening. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Chris, you wanna do it on the end?
I can wait till the end.
You know. Minutes of the previous meetings, regular meeting of May seventh, two thousand and twelve, the special meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, and special meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Okay, any discussions? Okay. Vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Bills. Copy of the bills. Any additions or deletions, Arson?
No, we don't have any.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Second.
Any discussions? Okay, vote by the usual sign of aye, so they behave.
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents.
Okay, the first item I have is mayor and trustees, the Rosas Point Fire Department respectfully request permission to apply for the two thousand and twelve volunteer fire assistance grant administered by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The grant application is for two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars for the purchase of updated brush force, uh, fire equipment. This grant requires a match of fifty percent of the grant amount of two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. The matching funds are available in the fire department budget requiring no additional funding beyond current appropriations. Thank you for your attention to this request. This is from Jimmy Moore, the fire chief.
Okay, any motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to apply for the two thousand and twelve volunteer fire assistance grant.
Second. Any discussions? No discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Okay, Carol?
The second item I have is dear mayor and board, at the May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals, it was recommended that John Mott be the chairperson of the zoning board and Daniel Turner be the alternate chairperson of the zoning board. Please act on these two positions as soon as possible.
Make a motion to accept?
Yeah. Second.
Any discussions? Okay. No discussions, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
The next item I have is to the mayor and trustees, the village budget for fiscal year two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve includes three thousand dollars for the village museum. The historical society is requesting that either we be allowed to spend this sum for computer equipment and software that we have identified before May thirty-first, or that the village board roll this money into the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget. Please advise. This was from Jerry Favre of the Rosas Point Historic Society.
I'd like to make a motion to roll that into the next budget. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? Vote by the usual, discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item I have, excuse me. I am taking a moment to request the village of Rosas Point consider placement of road signage that enhances the transparency of safety to motorists that travel on Montgomery Street. As a grandmother and citizen that is always concerned about our community's children, I am encouraging that the village consider my request for the following reasons. With the recreation parks entrance adjacent to Montgomery Street, children and pedestrians are walking along the sidewalks, crossing the road to the pier, and enjoying the lake view that is offered. As a grandmother, I often have young grandchildren that visit me and play in the front yard of my Montgomery Street residence. I also would like to note that I have a young neighbor who is close to me that is hearing impaired and has special needs that enjoys the Montgomery Street home that he lives in. I am hoping the park area, excuse me, I'm hoping that one of, or several children at play or pedestrian, and pedestrian walking signs be placed on Montgomery Street near the park area to assist with slowing the traffic down to the posted speed of twenty-five miles an hour. This act would be, offer a long-term solution to reinforcing the appropriate speed established in this part of the village for our children of today and years to come. It would also ease my mind and not worry about the children and people of the community that I care about who live, walk, and enjoy the village of Rosas Point. Thank you for your time and all the work that all the employees in each department do to help make this a great and developing place to live. And this is from Roberta Bennett. When she came in, she just saved up the speed and the sign that...
Right, where was that? Right.
Whatever trouble Montgomery Street is suffering.
Put one of those signs up, then slow them down. Where, um, did she take specifically where?
To, uh, the part, the recreation parks entrance adjacent to Montgomery Street. Uh, there's children, pedestrian, walking along the sidewalks, crossing the road to the pier, and enjoying the lake view, so they...
You have a crosswalk there.
Yeah, you do in front of lighthouses coming into the roadblock area. Do you just crosswalk and put a sign?
They haven't really got a issue with that.
Put one on each end, probably.
You just have one right in the curb, right Brennan?
Yeah, we had one by just the south of Lighthouse's driveway. It kept getting destroyed.
Do we wanna spend some time, investigate that and have an effect later, next meeting? Let's go down there and measure and see what...
We can put the children at play sign.
Yeah, well, that's easy.
Yeah, we have a couple of open stock we can put up and hopefully it'll slow the traffic down. But the people have to realize it's twenty-five miles an hour through there. They can't fly through there at fifty. It's a shortcut off that bridge road. Everybody knows it. It's a shortcut to Lake Street. Then they fly through there.
Okay, let's...
We've got a couple of those signs, let's put those up.
Yeah, in the meantime, then let's take a look, we'll do some measurements down there and we'll see what we can do to stop all that. The twenty-five mile, that's gonna be not big enough either. And that's still not... Not even gonna make a bit of difference.
Yeah.
Make a bit of difference. They know the speed. Can we put rumples, uh, no, the plows, right? Can't put rumples to it.
Well, we talked about it.
I mean, do we, there's, are there types that can be put in and taken out for the snowplows? Maybe we oughta look at that and just, you know, they start hitting those things, they'll slow down. They have to.
They're quite costly, though. That's the only bad thing.
Well, we can see if we can make, that's our street, right? We could probably make our own out of cement. I'll bet you, uh, these open castles. No, if they're legal that way. We'd have to find out if they're legal making our own. Yeah, but that's our street.
Now, just imagine if we pull those down and somebody does DM us the front end of the car and they go, oh, those aren't legal. We lost them in the city.
Oh, well, they're not gonna be barriers, they're just, they're only about that high. Rumples, I mean, checkpoint, yeah.
Yeah, but they would duck right into the cement grinder and ground them right out.
We need to look at that, let's look at that and then fix this. We'll, we'll have an answer by next week, next meeting. All right, then you want to table it for the... Make a motion, table that till the next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Carol, can I get a copy of that, my flat's in wrong.
Um, the next item I have, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Michael Bryan to see if, which I'm sure the field will be available, but it, um, I am ready to request the use of the Civic Center Pavilion and Bandstand on July twelfth, two thousand and twelve, from ten-thirty a.m. to one o'clock p.m. to host the senior picnic. Hopefully the weather will cooperate and we will have a beautiful day. Thank you for your assistance. And this is from Marcela White, who is the Congregate Meals Director for the Nutrition Program for the Elderly. I believe they used it last year, so if you want to approve it, and I can check with Mike and if it's good.
I'll make a motion to allow the Civic Center Pavilion Bandstand for the senior picnic on July twelfth.
One second. Any discussion? No discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Reports from the mayor and trustees. Mayor... Lisa?
I think that legal, I don't know.
Yeah, the legal motion.
Want me to read it?
All right, whatever you want.
Touch you.
The village of Rosas Point is seeking qualified consultant to provide program, program delivery and grant administration service for two thousand and eleven micro enterprise program grant from the Office of Community Renewal for the, for the full RBF, RFP. Please contact revitalization program, uh, project, Lewis and McManus, at submission deadline. The submission deadline proposes are due to, due at the close of business, four o'clock p.m. eastern time on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. Response must be returned by email in PDF format since files greater than ten megas, megabits?
Neurons.
Cannot be accommodated. All files must be less than ten megabits. So I'd be dive inviting a proposal until we move multiple emails and is accepted. Any motion on that?
Make a motion?
Yeah, let's, let's explain it to the public first, I think we should. All right. What these are, request for proposals, um, to try to find a consultant who would be responsible for developing application documents to help the micro enterprise system. They would work closely with Melissa and the state. Basically, they're just gonna assist businesses in developing applications for proposals, for the business community. They would file all required paperwork with the state. They would oversee the project on the village's behalf. And the consulting services are reimbursed as part of the grant program. And Melissa's total hours are also reimbursed under that EPF grant program, which has already been approved. So it's absolutely no cost to the village. Money's been approved, it's there. I think we should use, that's just a quick, short explanation of what that is. So, did you already make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it. Any discussions? No discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's all I have. Just feed my skill. I have nothing, I'm just...
What about me?
I'm going to go on the way that Carol's got it on us.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, um, I just have a report on the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen Public Libraries Instruction Grant Program. Donna was able to, or Miss Goldmell was able to obtain a grant to help with the parking lot and the return box for books at the library. The grant was for thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, and that will be matched with in-kind services. I also have, um, just a press release about the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July Committee is again hosting the village-wide drive sales from June thirtieth, from eight a.m. until whenever people start closing them down. And again, this year, we invite all residents to participate in this wonderful day. Anyone who wishes to be placed on our sale list or would like to get more details on this day can do so by contact, contact, sorry, contacting Carol Handfield at two nine seven, five five zero two. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Baker. Mayor Baker, members of the village board, per your request, the information is provided on the following properties within the village of Rosas Point. Alley Plaza in Portgrave is still in litigation with insurance. Letter sent from the code office demanding he rebuild or complete demolition. I spoke with the insurance company, was informed the suit should be settled within two months. If this is acceptable, I will wait until the end of July for compliance. Otherwise, I will send a notice of violation with an appearance ticket immediately. Regarding the Anchorage, the Anchorage has a planning board approval to rebuild. Approval was granted last fall. Owner has up to one year to start construction. If not started after one year, action can be taken to gain compliance with the local law. Currently, I'm told that a building permit is forthcoming. Regarding the Saxney property, spoke to Mark Chapman on May eleventh, two thousand and twelve, concerning the property and the construction underway. The only permit issued are to install windows and doors so as to facilitate the installation of vinyl siding. I also spoke with Mr. Chapman about the grass, junk, debris, and vehicles. Regarding the property at three twenty-six Lake, the property is set to be sold at the tax option. I have no information on this parcel, no other information on this parcel. Mike Tatro, Code Zoning Enforcement Officer. That was the request that we gave him last week to check on the properties. When he comes back next week, we'll meet with him. I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session to discuss the electric, electric customer.
Second.
Any discussion? You're probable.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and my second, uh, I would like to request an executive session to discuss accounting personnel. I'll put that in form of a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? No discussion, Brian, you're probable.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
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 Aye, and the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and just one other thing real quick. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, trustee Mascol and I went to the NIPA meeting in Syracuse. That's two meetings a year, New York Municipal Power Authority. And somebody has to go from the village, it's very important. The mayor and Brian Falke went two or three weeks ago, so trustee, trustee Mascol and I went. And we act, uh, we're the delegate for the village and we voted on some issues. And it was a good meeting, and I'm glad I went. That's all I have to report tonight.
I guess that's it. Treasure.
Oh, Brad.
I'm sorry.
Poor Brad.
Just got one main thing, and that's to request an executive session to discuss water plant personnel.
Second.
Three, okay, yeah, that's good. I'll second. You're probable.
Aye.
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 And the mayor votes aye.
I've just got a couple of small minor things. Tree in the park that's on the west side of it seems to be pretty well shot. It does need to be replaced, considering we are going to be getting some trees in shortly to have that replaced with one of them at the mayor's major, where he can get the crew to, be able to take that tree down and get new ones planted in. So, do we need a motion for that, or...
No, we've got enough trees, huh? How many did we get, forgot, ten?
About ten, then we get ten for free, right?
No.
Oh, sorry.
They're, they're coming in tomorrow.
Oh, they are?
I don't know about tomorrow, sorry.
And if, if not tomorrow, October, they'll be here Wednesday morning.
Good.
Should we wait till after the Fourth of July, or? No.
Oh, you gotta plant them.
All right, Brian?
If you can do it.
Get them in, I forget. You guys are right up against the wall now.
Okay. What you can do, anything?
You say you can do it, let's do it.
Yep.
Yeah, because you believe them in, in the bag way they are, and don't take care of them, they're gonna be shot. And you get dead before you get them, they gotta go in the ground. So then you gotta cut that tree down pretty quick, then.
Uh, one other thing, Mr. Mayor. Was asked by somebody in the public about some banners from the War of eighteen twelve. Some kind of banners or flyers that we're supposed to get in. They were wondering if they had, were, if we had gotten them in, if they were gonna be put up.
Need to get them to be in?
We also have flyers from a couple of years ago, too, that have to go up. I mean, the banners. Those, where are they? Welcome to Rosas Point, can you get it downtown? Yeah, can you get it downtown?
Where are those banners?
We have them in the back. But we haven't, we haven't received the ones yet for the War of eighteen twelve, haven't we?
No. I haven't seen any either. Are you, anybody got any, well, person?
I'd like to have board authorization to sign the contract and the just appraisal company, which they would do in an onsite inspection and appraisal of the billings, the fixed equipment, and the removal, the equipment associated with the property location in the agreement. This is, this is a budget available. This is a budget available.
When's the last time we did one? After that, I forgot.
Last time this company actually came up here was two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five.
We had one done last year, but that company went belly up on us.
And it's almost ten thousand dollars. Our current insurance company told us that, uh, free of charge, they're gonna send same thing, risk management thing, to do the fire department. So if that happens, can this be renegotiated to take the fire department off?
No, because it's totally, it's totally different things. If you're talking about a risk management, they're looking for hazards in the place and stuff.
That's what this, that's what...
This is, this is the value, this is value of property, plants, equipments, and stuff.
But it's for the insurance.
We need it, not only is for the insurance, but it's also for GAZI thirty-four, which is for your annual reports and stuff. That's what we need, the numbers.
What prompted having this now, or just they contact you every so many years? Are we...
Every year, this is updated. Every year, we do this update, Carol, it's all the, the, uh, purchases and stuff from the department heads. And she makes the changes for additions and deletions, or capital additions. But because of the fact that the company that we had last year went belly up, we have to have it done again. And that's out of the report that I showed you.
It's in the two thousand and twelve, thirteen budget, or the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve?
Two thousand and twelve, thirteen budget.
This is something we have to...
That includes tagging, tagging the items.
And we're required to have this by the state, or?
I need values to put in the report. And about fiscal years next week, so.
There's every budget it is. I don't have no power there, sorry.
Just because it's a budget, we have to spend it.
Yeah.
He says we need it, so, I don't know, I don't think we can get around it.
No, look like it. You know my opinion on budget. There's still a lot of things that we have to do that aren't counted in all this stuff.
We also had a meeting with your insurance agent on Friday, and she is looking forward also to this report.
Oh, sure, that's a good one for her.
Sure.
But if we had a buyer tomorrow that wiped out the village offices, we have no current pricing on anything in there to get replaced. They're gonna go back to two thousand and five value and then depreciate from there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, that's why we're pushing for inventory.
We don't have it listed on our policy and stuff, boy, I'll tell you, you can really get in the bind.
That's why we're pushing for inventory, we have nothing. I see. It's been what it looks like.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, go ahead and spend the money for the industrial appraisal. I'll put that form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote by the usual sign of aye, then.
Aye. No.
No.
Okay, I guess that's it. Brian, you got anything?
Yeah, our CPR, on the electric department, we did the physical inventory and CPR records. The whole program is up and running now. I'd like to, uh, probably have Carol send Brenda Arno a letter of gratitude. She really helped us out a lot, doing inputting on, on the, on the program. She did an excellent job. She's making our job a lot easier for us, for accountability, work orders. And Rick Lumbo said she did a super job. Tracy's taken over now and she can handle doing the daily work reports and doing the physical inventory. But that program really came together and it's gonna save us a lot of time and a lot of headaches. And the accountability is excellent. I mean, we know where, every fitting is, every foot of wire, every man hour, especially for the electric department, you have to account for every hour of the day where they work and look up. And I think Brenda did an excellent job. Just like to see her get thanked for it.
Very good idea. All right, Carol?
Need a motion, or?
The trees, they reported will be here tomorrow. The flowers will be here Wednesday. So the flowers will be going up on the poles Wednesday, along the flags. And we'll have all the flags up before this weekend, it's a special weekend.
Where's this information?
So the gift, we're doing about...
All right. We heard from everybody.
Are we done?
You want to do it to Carol, or?
Do you need board's approval? Back to the Brenda Arno, I think we might need a board decision to finalize that job, it's done now.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
What do you need, a motion to?
Motion to...
Go, I would go with the motion to...
Finalize it.
Finalize that, she's finished the job, so we, we no longer need that position, so...
Right, you're gonna do away with that position.
Have to send it off to civil service.
I'll put that form of a motion to wrap the project up and send her a letter also.
One second. Any discussion? No discussion, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion to recess if you're done?
Yeah.
Oh, you need a public, you have to comment in the public.
Comments from the public.
Chris Seuss from Lakeside Coffee. Did you all get the correspondence I sent last week regarding some of my issues?
Yes.
Every summer I see the downtown getting busier and busier, which I think is a good problem to have. But I have a lot of safety concerns, uh, with speeding, lack of any yielding to pedestrians. There is, during the day, I don't see any police presence. I really think they can sit on Washington Street and, and do some enforcement. I, sometimes my staff are late to work and I'm looking for them and it's taken them at least three minutes just to try to cross the street to get into the shop. And I know other businesses are having these issues, too. I think there's also a problem with tenants parking on the street. I don't think it's an issue overnight, but I think they need to be gone by the morning because they're taking up a lot of spots for everybody's businesses on Lake Street. I did write to the Department of Transportation because I was told that that is that part of Route 9 belongs to them, and they basically wrote back, you saw what they wrote back, that enforcement and putting up more signs is their answer. I have noticed in four and a half years, when you do put up the plastic men, people do slow down. But in front of my store, there's a half-finished crosswalk, which is really a joke, I mean, it's, it doesn't do anything. You know, I think every summer, we're getting more and more cycling groups that come through, more people want to stay in Rouse's Point, I mean, we can really tag on the whole Clinton County becoming a destination. But I also think it needs user-friendly downtown. And right now, I don't see that, and I'm really frustrated, and I just even think if a police officer were patrol down there during the day, and just make a presence, it would be great. The only people that ever stop to yield are Vermont license plates. And I think that's really because it's enforced there. There was a period of time for a few months where I couldn't park in the back of my building because there was construction going on, so I would have to do a lot of unloading and loading. And to stand there holding heavy boxes and nobody is yielding to me to get across the street was really frustrating, so. I'm just asking if you could look into this. I'm speaking on behalf of the Rouse's Point Business Group as well. I think there's also some concern, was a private marina approved? Is that, I, I think there's an issue too of where are those people gonna park? And I, I just think that people need to know that there is a great public parking lot. There's great signage for it, it's well-maintained, all of my staff have used it since the day we opened. So I just think the word needs to get out there that people need to utilize that lot, especially if there is a marina going in. If, I, I'm just concerned that if people park their cars in the street and leave it there for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's not good, yeah.
I mean, maybe it won't happen, but I just think now's the time to really address some of these issues with
I agree with you.
with speeding and yielding to pedestrians. And I know, because I live on Cumberland Head, Georgia Pacific put up a lighted pedestrian sign, you know, when you go across where the Georgia Pacific plant is. They just put up a sign that people push a button and it, the pedestrian sign flashes. And I, I mean, I was never good at always yielding either to them, but now I yield because I see that sign. So I, I think there's maybe some creative ways, even with the correspondence you received from that resident about Montgomery Street, I mean, I think there, it sounds like it's not just an issue with business owners either. So I don't know if it's more signage, crosswalks, enforcement, maybe a combination of all three that could help. Thank you.
I tried to I needed Sorrell from DOT to come and and bring two some new lines there.
Great.
We wanna come off and Washington Avenue straight to your door and still have the one from Armins coming across, and I don't know for sure if we can do that.
Well, thank you for looking into it.
And then see if we can get a sign up there.
And maybe even have your officers patrol in that area during the day sometimes? Because in four and a half years, I've never seen that happen. Like I said, maybe at night at the bars, but during the day, I think I would welcome the presence of your police.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Definitely.
I'm happy to report, since your letter, we actually accomplished quite a bit. Couple times in the morning, I got out and I sat there, I, I know, I've been around here and I've seen that. This morning, I went out and it was atrocious, this morning, and you weren't even open, and realized, I'm due.
Starting next Monday.
What's happening is the bridge over there, they're letting 10 or 15, so they're going in groups of 10 or 15 now going through from Vermont, if you noticed that. They stop traffic and it piles up and then so that, the village is really getting hit hard for up to five minutes, just steady traffic. So until that's fixed, we can't do anything about that. But I did call DOT and they have given us permission to put up those signs wherever we want. The issue is, we can't ticket if there's a problem at a crosswalk that's not designated. So I'm gonna work with Brian tomorrow and I guess, Mr. Mayor, you need to see this too. We have no signs, the truckers killed them, they're all dead, destroyed. We need to get all brand-new signs, we have none.
We have probably, I think we can salvage maybe four of them.
I went over there this morning, they got one.
Did you?
And it destroyed.
I left at noon, so they were supposed to get them all together.
I mentioned that to the DOT guy, and he said we have a unique problem because the street is not wide enough.
Right.
Cars park on both sides. And the truckers are just gonna, rather than hit oncoming, they're just gonna run over the sign. So I got him to commit, he's gonna send us one of those speed radar signs that says you're going too fast, the speed limit is now, so you are doing 40, speed limit's 30. So that's, I'm gonna work with Brian tomorrow, we're gonna find two spots to put it. He suggested one week for southbound traffic, and switch it one week for northbound traffic, and we should have it for a couple of months, I think, for sure. He's also gonna look into giving us some of those dummy signs, which, it goes along the lines of what you were saying, the flashing signs, he's gotta look and see what are left. Because of a lot of construction in New York, they're being used up quite a bit, but he's gonna look into that. The tenants, I went to try to find out why they're not being ticketed. In the code, they're allowed to park there.
Okay.
Even between the business, which is restricted from two to, or eight to six, eight to five, they can still park within there if they have a residence. The parking lot is restricted for overnight parking. So we've got two conflicting laws where you can't do anything. So what we're gonna do, the law says we can either do permits, I'm one for less, less is better, I'm, we're gonna have to look into having a motion to allow the parking lot to be, 24 hours. I've already talked to a couple of the landlords. They've discussed this with me, they've got parking in the back except for one. He's gonna remind, they're gonna remind them to start doing that. In the meantime, the people who are parking in the front, we're gonna see if we can just talk to them and get them across the street.
You know, a lot of places where I've lived before, you know, people get, you just get stickers, and you put it on your car that says, you know, you're allowed to park here, you live there, and you park there, I mean, it could be as simple as that.
Okay, it's a very simple fix.
Yeah.
But I think they, they're aware that they have every right to park there, according to the village rules.
Well, I appreciate knowing that, now, now I know that they can park there.
Yeah, and that's, so I went, we looked and spent some time over there and I've talked to pretty much everybody in the street, and we're gonna fix it, we're definitely gonna fix it. There's no reason why people can't park overnight. Now, as far as the enforcement issue, I'm working with NICOM and the state. I'm gonna recommend to the mayor that he appoint several constables. When they finish the boat landing on Montgomery Street, they appointed the mayor, then appointed the constables to monitor that. The mayor vested authority in Rouse's Point can hire as many as he needs, so I think during the summertime, they'll be walking the streets with a ticket book and/or, I hope, a radar gun. They have authority to write tickets, speeding tickets, parking tickets. I want them to do community policing, door-to-door.
Will they be in uniforms?
Sure. They're, they're basically peace officers. We're just gonna get some clarification from New York State on the training, there's a conflict, conflict on who trains. The old rule was the mayor and the village puts together the minimal training. But since then, the state has clamped down on a lot of that. So the training might have to be done by a sheriff's deputy, but that's fixable too. So we're looking into that. We're pretty sure by the, well, I'm hoping Fourth of July, it's probably gonna be more like the end of July, depending when the state gets back to us. They were supposed to come back today and they didn't, so, but we're working on that. I'm also thinking about, and I have to talk to the village attorney, publishing safety notices in the Press Republican to warn the public of the safety or the speeding in Rouse's Point. The mayor, because of the heavy traffic with the construction, the bridge, people need to just slow down and I'm gonna post that we are going to be enforcing it. That sometimes helps a lot. And I want the state to do a traffic audit. I want them to set up a meter as they come off Route 2 and come off from Canada, I want a meter right there that count all the traffic that comes through the middle of the street, and I want a meter on Lake Street as you come off 11 and north on 90 to see exactly what is coming through here every 24-hour period. He told me that they're being used a lot too because of the construction all over the state, but he's gonna make a preliminary request for one, and we'll be on a list. So I'm hoping to do that before the snow flies.
But this being a state road, can the state police set up one of the speed zones that takes the picture? So that we can get a couple of tickets handed out through this? We could get in conjunction with the state police and just have that taken care of, and then
The issue was?
when people are speeding through and they're just going through, and now they start getting mail tickets, that might help spread the word to slow down on these streets in Montgomery and even Lake Street here.
He has done, he suggested looking around, see if we can borrow one. They're expensive. We don't have the money.
See, the school had one time.
They did, I'm not sure where they got that. Anyway.
County's gonna give us one, we can use it for, like you say, for a couple of months.
Brian and I are over on tomorrow, and Brian can help pick some spots, and then we'll be back on the phone with them. We'll get Scott involved too, and we're gonna have possibly replacing one of the vehicles over there. So we're on it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, if you have anything else, we'll take a five-minute recess and go into executive session.
Motion to recess?
Motion to recess.